Welcome to the August tenth, two thousand and fifteen Troy City Council Meeting. We're pleased this evening to have Councilman Pennington lead us with the invocation. If you would please rise for that and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to live in the greatest nation on earth, a land where all faiths are welcome and can gather without the fear of being persecuted or prosecuted. We pray that you give us wisdom on the issues that come before this council, that we may deal with them in a way that is favorable for everyone. We pray that you keep our first responders and the police and fire departments safe and healthy as they continue to keep protecting us from evil that constantly strives against us. We pray for a blanket of protection for all of our troops that are safeguarding our interests here and abroad, and we thank you for all of these blessings. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Thank you, Councilman Pennington. Troy City Council Meeting is now called to order. The roll call, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Slater?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Campbell?
Here.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Here.
Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Councilmember Hoderek?
Here.
Councilmember Pennington?
Here.
Councilmember Teetz?
Here.
All present, our first order of business this evening is certificates of recognition and special presentations. We are going to go out of order this evening and take C one, or correction, take C two first. So if I could ask Tom Stratt to meet me at the podium, I would like to present a service We'll face the audience here rather than this group behind us, okay?
Even though they're the ones that got me into this place.
That's true.
And you.
And me.
All right.
But, Tom, it's really an honor and a privilege for me to be here tonight on behalf of the Troy City Council and all the residents and businesses of Troy to present you with a well-deserved service commendation as a planning commissioner. And if I could, I'd like to read this into record. And I know you want to say a few words, so I'll let you do that, too. Whereas Thomas Stratt served on the Planning Commission for twelve years, from June second, two thousand and three, to July fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen. And whereas Tom established his architectural practice, Tom Stratt Architects, what a unique name, in Troy in nineteen seventy-two. Since nineteen seventy-two, Tom has witnessed extensive growth and positive changes within the Troy community through his architectural practice, as well as his service on the Troy Planning Commission. And whereas Tom and his wife Judy have lived in Troy for more than thirty years, they will celebrate their thirty-third wedding anniversary in September of two thousand and fifteen. Tom also serves on the Volunteer Board at the Saint George Greek Orthodox Church in Bloomfield. And whereas while Tom will continue to maintain his architectural practice in the city of Troy, they are now moving to their new home on Silver Lake in Waterford, where they will enjoy more time with their daughter, Deana, sons Tom and Michael, and their nine grandchildren. And whereas the quality of life that the city of Troy offers is a result of hard work, planning, sacrifice, and leadership, thanks to Tom, one of Troy's dedicated volunteers, our quality city services will continue to thrive in our key to making Troy the greatest place to live in the state of Michigan. So now therefore be it known that the Troy City Council takes this opportunity to express its sincere appreciation and recognition to Tom Stratt for his distinguished service and his many, many contributions to the betterment of the city through his work on the Planning Commission. And be it further known that by donating his time and talents, Tom Stratt has furthered the ideals that contribute to enriching our community. Troy is very fortunate to have citizens like Tom who give so much time and energy to make our community a great place to live, work, play, and raise a family. This is presented this tenth day of August, two thousand and fifteen, and signed by myself, all members of the City Council. Congratulations to you, Tom, and thank you so much for your years of service. Tom would like to say a few words.
I can't believe the, I'm very humbled. I just can't believe all of the investigation that went in and all the history of my life. I can't even believe it myself. But you haven't gotten rid of me because I'm still staying in Troy and my officers are still going to be here, so. But I really would like to thank the mayor, the council, the staff, excellent staff, for the honor of being able to serve on the Planning Commission. It certainly was an honor. And I've had the opportunity of visiting many communities and planning commissions, as well as ZBA, Zoning Board of Appeals. We have the most professional staff that we have, and a lot of them are in the audience here, a few of them are there, colleagues over there. I really can't thank you enough. I really feel, I hope I have contributed some, and I thank you very much.
Thank you again, Tom. Thank you much. Next is C one. We will have Senator Marty Nolenberg and State Representative Martin Horelick present a flag to the city of Troy in honor of Troy's sixtieth anniversary. Good evening.
Good evening. We promised that we'll be very brief today, and obviously this is a great tribute to the city of Troy. City of Tomorrow Today is a great slogan. I think we're all very familiar with that, and we do have a tribute that we want to present to the city. I'm not going to read the whole thing, and I'll leave it with you guys to do that, but I appreciate the city. I live here, I work here, I play here, and that seems to be the motto, and happy to be a part of this community. And it's a great city, obviously. We actually have two flags here. Martin will present the one. The one I'm presenting is actually being thrown over the state capitol as we speak, and that's the state of Michigan flag, and that will be brought to you later on this week.
Thank you, Marty.
We just wanted to make sure that we brought forward to the City Council here some state recognition of the sixtieth anniversary of the establishment of the city of Troy, and, you know, a lot of good things are happening. And, you know, when I was born, two years after Tom Stratt started his firm there, Big Beaver Road was two lanes, and we lived right off of Big Beaver Road in Charter Square Apartments when I was born. And so it's, you know, as a kid and also as an adult, seeing Troy grow up, and, you know, every time you think that Troy is fully developed, people find a way to put more into our city and things that really add to the value of our community. So I want to express my gratitude to the management here, the city manager and the city attorney, and also to the City Council and to you, Mayor Slater, for just doing a very good job of running this city and having efficient meetings that reflect the will of the people. And so with that, I have in this box here, I'm not sure what the proper way of doing it is, but you'll have to take my word on it. I'm always worried about dropping the U.S. flag, but there is a U.S. flag in here that we're presenting to you as well.
Thank you very much, Martin. Would you like me to come down and grab those from you?
Do you, Mayor? Love to have you up here.
Thank you again for those flags. City Manager Kishna, can we get that up in the air tomorrow?
We'll certainly get the U.S. flag. I think the state flag will do next week.
Thank you. Next is C three. As we all know, we had a transformer fire that caused some issues a couple of weekends ago, so here to make a presentation and give us an update on that is Chief Mayor. Good evening, Chief.
Mayor, Council, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. Tonight's my honor to introduce some people who will speak on the Apache substation incident, kind of give an overview of what occurred, and then also DTE representatives are here to speak to us. So with me tonight is Kristin Diag, Emergency Management Specialist from the Police Department, Anthony Iafrotti, our Police Department Assistant, Sergeant Megan Lehman, Mike Pelchesko, the DTE Regional Manager, and Paul Whitman, the Director of Distribution Operations. So at this point, I will turn it over to Kristin.
Good evening, Kristin.
Good evening, Mayor Slater, council members, and the city staff and constituents. I wish we met more often under better circumstances, and I could be the bearer of good news for once, but as you know, a couple of weeks ago, on July twenty-third, there was a fire at the DTE Apache Substation that's located on Livernoy and Big Beaver. This affected about ten thousand residential and business customers. The fire happened within this switchgear cabinet, and according to Fire Department Chief Nelson, there is, the exact cause of the fire is still unknown and is currently under investigation. As you can see here, this is the affected area. That fire caused a large power outage to a large percentage of the city. The affected area was in between Coolidge Highway, John R., Fourteen Mile, and Square Lake Road. That's illustrated on the left map. And on the map on the right, this illustrates the quick response that the Department of Public Works provided stop signs to the major intersections where there weren't generators that were powering traffic signals. And during this time, the Police Department was also directing traffic. Coordination during the beginning of the incident was very challenging until the incident command post was strategically established near the scene. And the Emergency Operations Center was partially activated. The EOC is what we like to call this. It provided a common operating picture, and it also allowed for the unity of effort of decision-making, management of resources and information, and it also increased communication between the city departments as well as between DTE. And this was very important because there was rolling power outages in the following
Regarding police staffing, during the first twenty-four hours of the outage, we essentially doubled our patrol staffing. This was to respond to any possible calls that would be generated by the power outage, also to give extra patrol to the areas that were affected by the outage, both residential and businesses, especially those businesses that didn't have alarms during the outage. As you can see on the graph, we had a spike in calls at eight-thirty a.m. when the incident occurred. That was during morning rush hour, so there was a major impact on traffic. We were able to get ten-plus patrol officers out on the road to direct traffic nearly immediately by reassigning officers that were in training that day. We did have a significant increase in call volume. From July twenty-third through July twenty-fifth, we handled two thousand six hundred sixty-six incoming calls, and during the subsequent rolling outages, July twenty-eighth through the thirty-first, we handled two thousand nine hundred and seven incoming calls.
On July twenty-fourth, between nine a.m. and six p.m., a water and ice distribution center was established and resolved coordination between DTE and the Troy Police Department. DT provided ice, water, volunteers, and the Troy Police Department provided volunteers and a location to distribute the ice and water, which was at the north end of the Police Department parking lot. Fifteen hundred cases of water and eleven hundred bags of ice were distributed. The Troy Police Department did also get in contact with Woodside Bible Church to establish a cooling station to allow citizens without power relief from the heat. About a half a dozen people showed up to utilize that resource, and it is worth noting that the Woodside Bible Church is also American Red Cross certified. DTE provided various locations, or generators and portable substations at various locations throughout the city. This location is at the Apache Substation at Livernoy and Big Beaver. This next one is at Crooks and Big Beaver. And these two locations you see here, the top one is a community center in Troy and the bottom one is a city hall. I would also like to make the point that building operations played a central in bringing power back to the community center and the city hall to establish their day-to-day operations as soon as possible.
Regarding media and public relations, we started that effort almost immediately. We sent out our first tweet on Twitter at nine-thirteen a.m. And we did send out four formal press releases during the first twenty-four hours, which goes to the media as well as different businesses and citizen groups in the city. We also posted information on the city website. And we used our social media, Twitter and Facebook, very heavily during the outage. On Facebook, from July twenty-third through the twenty-fifth, and also July twenty-ninth, when we had the beginning of the outages, of rolling outages, we did thirteen postings regarding the outages and engaged a total number of approximately thirty-four thousand people, which is a significant increase from our average of approximately twenty-six For Twitter, from those same dates, we did twenty-two tweets and reached about twenty-two thousand people, which is also a lot more than we usually reach, and we engaged approximately a thousand people. And by engage, I mean people retweeted what we put out, responded, shared, and we did receive a lot of feedback, positive feedback about our communication. You can see on that tweet that's posted, you all go above and beyond regularly. The citizens appreciate you. That's a pretty typical type of response we got. And we did also communicate with the traditional media. We got a lot of coverage, mostly very positive coverage. Fox Two came out, and the story they were doing was not so much regarding the outage, but about how the city of Troy responded and how we responded so positively. Turn back to Kristin.
Now I want to go back to this question because I think that it's a strong and positive message that we have a strong impact in our local community, the region, and throughout the state. And if you can remember or recall, exactly one year ago tomorrow will be the anniversary of the severe storms and flooding incident. As of today, the city of Troy was reimbursed a total of one hundred seventy-three thousand nine hundred seventy-nine dollars and forty-nine cents out of the two hundred nine thousand six hundred seventy-two dollars and sixty-eight cents that was claimed in incident-related costs. So that equals up to eighty-three percent in funds that FEMA reimbursed to the city. But the main purpose of why we did the declaration, however, was to make sure that the citizens were taken care of. So the total needs assistance to individuals and households of the affected southeast Michigan region was three hundred eleven million, two hundred sixteen thousand seventy-four dollars and fifty-two cents. And our citizens of Troy would not have been able to receive any of that funding if it wasn't due to the disaster declaration that Mayor Slater had signed during the early parts of the incident. Now I'm going back to the question, why does the city of Troy always go above and beyond? And in my opinion, the city of Troy has well-experienced and hard-working professionals that consistently come together as one unit, as a team, and doing everything that they can to meet the needs and keep the best interests of our constituents in mind. The city has proven time and time again, disaster after disaster, that we're a resilient community and that we can persevere in front of any challenges that we face. And finally, going back to the mission statement of our city, is that the city of Troy upholds the strong belief in always doing government the best.
Thank you.
At this point, Mr. Pelchesko and Mr. Whitman will come up to address, from a DTE perspective, I must say that Mr. Whitman does look a lot different without his hard hat on, when I normally saw him working at the Apache Substation there, directing people around and doing a really good job. And Mr. Pelchesko does appear a bit more relaxed than when he was in emergency operations.
Gentlemen, good evening.
Thank you, Chief, and good evening, Mayor, members of council, City Manager Kishnik and staff. Again, as the chief introduced me, I am the Regional Manager, Corporate and Government Affairs for Oakland County for DTE, and Mr. Whitman here is our Director of Distribution Operations. I'd like to, first of all, say thank you to the city, the staff, the Police Department, Fire Department, and others that we worked real well with during this incident. We established a partnership early on that Thursday morning, and that we enhanced that partnership the farther we got into the event. Very much appreciate the support of the city, helping us with the communication, but also the willingness of the staff to allow us to use the north parking lot at the community center for a very critical staging area. That was very helpful to us. So we just have a few comments here, just want to supplement all the information that was provided, and I'll now turn to my colleague, Mr. Whitman, to make a few comments about the substation.
Yeah, thank you, and good evening. Just want to say I'm a Troy resident, by the way, so. I want to echo the comments that Mike had about the Police Department and the Fire Department. They were excellent to work with, and it made things go a lot easier for us, so I appreciate that. Just a little bit about the restoration effort that we went through, first of all. This was a very complicated restoration effort in light of what happened there, primarily due to the density of the load here. There's about a hundred and ten MVA loads served out of the Apache Substation, which is a lot. And so what we did was, we had, when we lost, we interrupted the entire substation due to the fire, and we had to transfer load to adjacent substations was our first alternative. Then we brought in portable diesel generating units that you saw in the presentation, and then we brought in about twelve to fifteen MVA of distributed generation, diesel generators that we were able to hook up and carry all the customers. We were able to do that. Everyone was restored within forty-eight hours, which was a pretty remarkable feat in light of, you know, what we had there at our hands in the beginning of that event. So it was a very complicated effort. The cause of the incident, it was listed as a transformer fire. That is not the case. The cause of the incident was actually a bus bar. There's a bus bar that goes between breaker positions, over top, overhead on the cubicles that are there. The bus bar there had a fault. Actually, there was a break in the insulation on that bus bar, caused the fault and caused the fire, and the fire caused a lot of damage to control wiring. There was no equipment damage inside the substation. Now, we have inspected all the equipment, made sure that it's ready for service, but the bulk of the work in there was redoing control wiring and power wiring inside the substation. It was pretty much all burned and melted down, so it was just a lot of work to get that up and going. So that was the cause of the fire. The status of the substation right now, we do have two transformers, a three transformer substation. We do have two of the transformers energized, carrying all the customers that were served out of Apache are now back into Apache Substation. That happened last Saturday. So we're pretty good from a reliability standpoint right now. We are working on the remaining transformer, the remaining buses that that transformer serves. That's where all the damage was at, for the most part, and so that work is expected to be done the first week of September is our target right now. So at that point, the substation will be back to total normalcy. We are doing some additional work while we're here. We're going to do some tree trimming in our, at our facility. There's some trees that are growing up through the grating. We're going to take care of all that. We've redone the roofs on our substation, and we're doing some tuck pointing on some of the brickwork, so when we leave there, we'll have a really good operating substation from that perspective. So that's pretty much what I had for an update. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for the Councilman Pennington?
Just out of curiosity, that bar that failed, is that aging, like aging something that, you know, failed because of age, or is it?
The bar is just a piece of copper. It can go for hundreds of years. The insulation is what failed. See, I got a crack in the insulation. Why that crack occurred, we don't know, but that's where the fault occurred. Once it started tracking through that crack in the insulation, it tracked over to the other phase. There's two phases that got together, and that caused the fire.
Okay.
So we've inspected and mega'd and hypodded all those bus bars, and they've all been clean, redone, and so that's, should be good from that point forward.
Councilwoman Hoderek?
Sounds like the EOC was a very positive effort. I suspect that you all have this in your plans to maybe debrief when the dust settles from us, or the smoke settles, as it were. You know, you guys stepped up. I know I got a text message at eight-thirty that morning wondering why we lost power in my subdivision, and questions were being answered immediately. I really appreciate the social media effort really relieved a burden for me. I don't, I can't speak for every council member, but I went from getting a ton of text messages to pointing them to where they could get information, and that was helpful. So that's a piece of debrief I will just share. Whoever can get on that keyboard and be communicating as quickly as possible, it's served the residents well because they understand what's going on. Some people were afraid initially, and it just helped them understand what the system failure was and why they were seeing that. So any, I just encourage debriefing. Heaven forbid we see you again in a year, but if we do, let's keep learning and continue to improve and do this as well as we can.
Mayor? We follow the rigid guidelines of what Kristin comes up with, and Kristin has already debriefed us. We've already had a debrief meeting. We've been through that. And we've us, we've already had a debrief meeting, we've been through that, and we've come up with some, based on that after action, we have come up with some points that we need to work on and correct. Nothing major, but that's the reason that you do the debrief, is to see if there's issues in areas where you can improve. So we've identified those. And as far as the keyboarding, Sergeant Lehman did, I did watch her use her keyboarding skills throughout the incident, and it is interesting to see the difference in the public information officer from when the mayor was the public information officer for Troy PD to where he is now, which is, Megan spent all of her time keyboarding and tweeting, I don't think I ever heard Mayor Slater say the word tweet in my life, so I don't know what's in his vocabulary there.
It's a different world today, for sure. Any other questions from council? I personally thank you for the letters of appreciation that were sent by DTE to council, I think they're included in our packet this evening. I believe we sent letters out, hopefully you got those. The cooperation, I don't think I've ever seen cooperation from DTE like we did over this incident, so thank you for doing that, we appreciate it, makes it easier for us. Thanks.
Mayor? Mayor? Actually, I have a quick question for Chief. Chief, just out of curiosity, in the three-plus days that were there spread of cottages, was there anyone that tried to take advantage of any of the businesses or homes that were without power, and so they're without their alarm systems?
Not to my knowledge, we did have a lot of extra patrol out there, so the officers were directed to do high-profile patrol in the neighborhoods that didn't have power and along the commercial areas that did not have power, so apparently worked because we didn't have any problems.
Thank you.
Sir? Thank you. Thanks again for coming tonight, thanks for the update.
Mayor, if I may, I have one final point that I wanted to point out with Kristen here. Kristen, if you could step up. First of all, as we've heard a couple times here, one year apart, so I think next year at this time, I'm probably going to be on vacation. Kristen recently became certified as a professional emergency manager, this represents her becoming one of only two-hundred-and-eighty people designated by the Michigan State Police as having the knowledge and skills needed to perform in this state. She took two-hundred-and-forty hours of classwork, tabletop exercises, national incident management training, and other coursework. I'm very proud of her achievement, she's coordinated two significant matters for us, the flood and the power outage, and both times excelled, so this has been a very good investment for us. Everyone involved in this matter did a really good job, Kristen was at the fore, and I appreciate the work of everybody. Thank you.
So do we. Thank you. Thank you, Kristen. We completed our study session this evening, so there's no need to call upon C-4 this evening, there are no carryover items, no public hearings scheduled, so we will move to public comment for items on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. I call on Phoebe White. I think you signed up for C-4, I don't know if that's your intent or not. You can speak on-
This is for the water, please.
Okay, sure.
Okay. Thank you for taking my comments, and I was concerned because as a longtime city resident of Troy and a single homeowner, I was worried about this decision that's very, very serious, as you can tell from everything that we've experienced recently with water and the water going, the contaminated water now going through the river. If somebody is not manning the ship properly, that we could be in for a catastrophe, and I feel the ball is in our court, Detroit is bankrupt. I feel that water is a necessity for our lives and for everyone to live, we need pure water, and we shouldn't be charged so high for the rates. And I think the city of Detroit has shown in the past that they have been neglectful, they've had reoccurring bad decisions, even terrorists got a map of the water system, they've had criminal activity with officials taking bribes, and I don't know, I just don't understand why, you know, the Belle Isle was taken from the city of Detroit, that was mismanaged, it's now improving. The Detroit Zoo is no longer run by the city of Detroit, and that is thriving, and something as important as our water supply and water system being properly governed, being properly repaired, and have the costs low for our people. The senior citizens of this country are becoming the majority, the Big Blue Boomers are in the majority, and there's going to be more and more, they're going to be having to spend their money on their living expenses and living off their retirement, which is, and these high costs with all the utilities are just increasing tremendously. Now, to me, I think they should just shelve the whole thing and have the governor get involved and take over and have it run and taken out of Detroit's hands. I don't think that they have shown that they are capable of doing proper research and keeping their hands out of their pockets. But if you decide against that, which I think they should really strongly get in touch with the governor, this is really the governor's problem, we should not be taking up Detroit's water bill. But as Brian Baker, the financial, Chief Financial Officer of Sterling Heights, posed the most logical, obvious concerns, which was in the Troy Times, this quote, "At the end of the day, we wanted a fair regional system with adequate long-term protections in place for an equal partnership."
Ms. White, your three minutes are-
Okay, I'll quickly tie this up.
I'll give you ten more seconds.
Okay. The votes that Detroit has are two, it's not on equal footing, all the counties only have one vote each, so that's not fair, and you're going to be paying into the system a ten percent higher rate increase than if the deal had not been approved because you have the-
Ms. White, thank you, I think we understand.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate your comments.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone from council or staff that wish to respond? We had a presentation this evening at six, and the council will be taking a vote on whether to go with the Great Lakes Water Authority probably in a few weeks, so we welcome your comments before that vote, thank you. There are no postponed items this evening, so we will move to regular business. Our first order of business is board and committee appointments, I have a couple of appointments this evening. First of all, I would like to move to appoint Paul Hoff and Nicholas Vitale to the Local Development Finance Authority, which is known as the LDFA, for terms that expire on 6/30/2019. Support. Moved by the chair and supported by Councilman Pennington that we appoint Paul Hoff and Nicholas Vitale to the Local Development Finance Authority, LDFA, for the terms to expire 6/30/2019. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teets?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. Motion passes. Next, I would like to appoint to the Planning Commission Carlton Faison for the term that expires 12/31/2017. Moved by the chair, supported by Mayor Pro Tem Campbell, that we appoint Carlton Faison to the Planning Commission for the term that expires 12/31/2017. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Mayor Pro Tem Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teets?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. Motion passes, congratulations to those residents that have offered their services to our city. There are no council appointments this evening, and there are no mayoral nominations, so I will give the microphone to Mayor Pro Tem Campbell for city council nominations.
Thank you, Mayor. We have two of them tonight, one is for the Historic District Commission, and I would like to move the name Howard Adams to the position, and that position will expire 5/15/2018. I'll do the second one as well?
Yeah, please.
Okay. Also, for the Parks and Recreation Board, I'd like to move and have Charles Salgat, his name put into consideration, and his term would expire 7/31/2016. And that's it for this evening.
Support. Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Campbell and supported by Councilman Henderson that we appoint those that were stated on record by Mayor Pro Tem Campbell for nominations. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teets?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next is I-3, which is a request for closed session, there are none this evening. I-4 is the Library Millage Content Neutral Flyer with the presentation by City Manager Kishnik. And of course, City Attorney Bloom.
And I'll talk about that in a second. Thank you, Mayor and council, as you know, we've gone through a very elaborate, comprehensive process to discuss and evaluate the library and funding for the library, taken in a lot of data and shared ideas and communicated the best we can with residents and the Financial Ideas Team and the city council, and after the council approved the language, we've now brought before you a content neutral flyer, working with staff, many staff have been involved in this, I see Kathy Russ, Alyssa, who's here, Maggie was here, Mark Miller, hopefully I didn't miss anyone. But anyway, and the city attorney's office, who of course works with us to make sure that this is only the facts on the library millage for five years, Mayor, as a renewal, as this council had put before us and approved. So you have the flyer in front of you, I just note that in the back of the flyer, I don't know, in front or in the back, it's a tri-fold flyer, but in the back is many of the facts, or all of, all facts that we were able to take that was requested from the Financial Ideas Team, and you know, Nick Chiarosera was a big advocate for a lot of these facts and the users, and so we've included those as facts. So this is the information, content neutral flyer that the city council has asked us to put together to be mailed to voting residents.
Thank you. I assume with the approval of the city attorney?
Absolutely, Mayor, and the reason why we looked at it is campaign finance does not allow you to endorse any ballot or to oppose any ballot position using city resources, and we have reviewed it, I think that they've done a nice job of being just very factual in this flyer.
Thank you. I know that the finished product that has been placed on the table on the yellow sheet is not the exact same one that was in the packet this evening, but the new flyer will be available on the website, correct? Any questions for staff regarding the flyer? I know you've received some input from council members to tweak it a little bit, and I know there was a major concern to make sure it was neutral, that was, that was the main topic that I think came out of council, so it looks good to me. Councilman Pennington, did you want to move the resolution?
I sure will, I'd like to move I-4, resolve that the Troy City Council hereby proves the November 3, 2015 election informational proposed Library Millage Renewal Ballot Question Brochure, a copy of which shall be attached to the original minutes of this meeting. Be it further resolved that Troy City Council hereby directs city administration to mail the November 3, 2015 election informational proposed Library Millage Renewal Ballot Question Brochure to all Troy residents with registered voters.
Support. Moved by Councilman Pennington and supported by Councilman Gottlieb that we approve I-4, the Library Millage Content Neutral Flyer that was read into the record this evening, and that would be the flyer that was printed on the yellow sheet on our table this evening. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teets?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teets?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. Motion passes. Next is the Consent Agenda, is there a council member that has an item that they wish to pull this evening? Councilman Henderson?
I'd like to pull J-6.
Okay. Any other items this evening from council? Somebody like to move the resolution? Councilman Gottlieb? We are pulling I-6, or J-6.
Pulling J-6, can we go with as printed consent agenda items? Are we there?
If you could read it, and when it gets to the exception of items, indicate J-6, which will be considered after the consent agenda items as printed.
Okay, approval of J items not removed for discussion, be it resolved, Troy City Council hereby approves all items on the consent agenda as presented with the exception of items J-6, which shall be considered after consent agenda J items as printed.
Support. Who's that?
Me.
Moved by Councilman Gottlieb and supported by Councilman Pennington that we approve all items on the consent agenda with the exception of J-6, which will be considered after this approval. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teets?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes. If you were here on a consent agenda item, other than J-6, they've all been approved this evening, Laura, thank you for coming this evening, and I'll see you tomorrow. Okay, have a good evening. Councilman Henderson, I will defer to you.
J-6 is designation of a voting delegate, an alternative for the Michigan Municipal League Conference in Traverse City, and we didn't have anybody really signed up to go, so I thought we should discuss that.
Yes, I appreciate that. Does anyone on council want to volunteer to be the delegate? Before we make an appointment?
Before you get assigned.
We have somebody to appoint, go ahead.
No, we're looking for volunteer, are you volunteering?
If it's September 6th, I can.
Sixteenth.
Seventeenth.
I don't have the calendar open, what's the September seventeenth?
It's a Thursday?
Thursday.
I can't. Councilman Pennington, I was looking down there, you're not looking, you're not looking back.
I felt the glare. Traverse City is nice this time of year, but play golf up there.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Hoderick?
I do need to look at my calendar to make sure, but if we, if no one else is interested, I would make an effort to make that work and-
I second.
-be happy to represent.
All those in favor? No. No, I appreciate that, and if something comes up and you need to get out of it, we can revisit this again before September, so thank you for volunteering, so.
Would you like to be the alternate?
No, my, my wife and will not, I wouldn't be here after that, last time you see me. We're expecting a baby September 1st, so September 17th, I should-
Think you have a good excuse.
Yeah. To leave town.
I'll be the alternate unless somebody else wants to. So I will move a resolution to the city council appoints Councilwoman Hoderick to be the voting delegate, and the mayor Slater to be the alternate for the Michigan Municipal League 2015 Annual Meeting held on Thursday, September 17, 2015, in Traverse City, Michigan. Moved by the chair, supported by Mayor Pro Tem Campbell, that we approve J-6 as- Moved by the chair, supported by Mayor Pro Tem Campbell, that we approve J-6 as read into the record this evening. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Campbell?
Absolutely, yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next is memorandums and future council agenda items. I would like to announce two public hearings. The first is August 24, 2015. There is an announcement of a public hearing regarding approval of district boundary amendments and approval of the amended, restated, and extended development plan and tax increment financing plan of the cities of Southfield and Troy Joint Local Development Finance Authority. And also on August 24, 2015, there will be a public hearing for conditional rezoning application, which is file number CR-013, a proposed Amber Studio and Lofts East Side of Liverneys between Vermont and Birchwood, Section 21, from O Office District to MR District, Maple Road District. So those will be public hearings, and I see Mr. Amber is here this evening. It's always nice to see you, sir. Okay, two, there are no memorandums submitted by city council, so we will move to public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. I will call on Rachelle Wenske, Troy resident. I hope I got your last name okay. Good evening.
Actually, Rachel Wenske, hello. I know I spell it a little different, but good evening, Mayor Slater, council members, and city staff members. My husband and I both grew up in Troy, and now we feel very fortunate to raise our children in such a safe and secure city. Lately, however, we've had some concerns about businesses opening in our neighborhood. We live in the Willmore Point subdivision. We knew there was a group home in our sub, and despite the fact that it brought extra traffic with its employees, visitors, and EMS vehicles, we were grateful that the residents had a safe place to live. Very recently, however, we've been alarmed by the exponential increase in the number of these homes, and we see that there are many more opening in the near future. In fact, it seems a specific company will have gone from two or three to six or seven homes in a matter of months. I'm curious about whether or not there are any restrictions regarding the number of these homes within a specific proximity, because there is such a large number in less than a quarter-mile radius. I fear a slippery slope effect. My biggest concern lies in the fact that these group homes will take away from the natural rhythm of our family homes. This cycle will be broken by these businesses, and this in turn will affect the number of students in our local schools. We live in a very affordable sub, and they seem to be purchasing every four-bedroom ranch home, which takes away opportunities for new families to move in. I'm not looking for these group homes to disappear, but I just wanted to bring my concerns to the city, and I would like to see regulation of these businesses in order to keep the integrity of our neighborhood and schools. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Dominic Wenske? Okay, now we're going to really hear from an important person. Could you bring that microphone down for him, please? Good evening, Dominic.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Dominic. I am seven. I go to Hill School. I am worried about having group homes in my town. I think it will make my friends move out of the neighborhood and stop me from getting new friends in the neighborhood. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dominic. We appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Dominic asked me if he could speak tonight. Thank you.
He can speak anytime. Mr. Geiger, would you wish to speak this evening?
Mr. Mayor and council?
Good evening.
I would like to remind everybody here that 70 years ago this week, the United States, with our allies, brought the Second World War to a positive conclusion, a successful conclusion. It wasn't easy. It wasn't inevitable. Just a few short weeks prior to the conclusion of the European War, the war could have gone either direction. That's when a number of wannabe pilots became infantry riflemen. The World War II effort by the United States was probably the most unified action the United States, I think, has ever taken in our history. Little kids took their used tooth—metal toothpaste tubes along with sometimes their mother's aluminum pans, dropped them at the corner filling station along with other munitions materials or other collection points. We had rationing of sugar, meat, gasoline. Homes were disrupted with not only military service, but people working in military supply There were millions in the military services, and then there were a few, including my brother and 400,000 others in the military service that made the supreme sacrifice. In my opinion, not only do I think they should be honored but appreciated, it was not—the benefits just should not be taken for granted. And the benefits include the opportunities for meetings such as we're having tonight, and the individuals' rights to select and choose and pursue livelihoods of their own selection. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Geiger. And thank you for your service too, Mr. Geiger. It's amazing how you knew exactly when the three-minute signal was up. You were done right at three minutes. Perfect. Thank you. Next is city council and city administration response.
Maybe the city attorney wants to respond, but it'd probably be appropriate to just stay after, and then we can have Mark Miller and Lori and myself meet with Dominic up here.
That'd be great. Just—just Ms. Wednesday, just to let you know, it's—a common complaint that—we do get. We have very limited powers, but as City Manager Kishnik indicated, if you would like to stay over and speak with—the city attorney and staff, they'd be happy to let you know what can be done. There are regulations, so we can have a discussion with you after the meeting if you want to do that. Thank you. Any other comments from council? Councilwoman Hoderick?
Regarding the World War II reflection, I appreciated that, and I think tonight we are seeing a legacy of the Greatest Generation. And when it came home from that war, the communities it set up, the practices it set up, we saw private and public sector example tonight of DTE and—the folks here from the city working together. We see people coming in to talk about their neighborhoods and the importance of their schools, young people, older people. My father was in the Signal Corps in World War II and was on a ship heading to Japan and would not have survived the role that he was designated to play. So each anniversary, I appreciate the fact that my father was allowed to come home, meet my mom, and I lived the life that I live in freedom to practice the faith that I practice and to serve and lock arms with people in this community, to keep it strong, to work together so that we can have the quality of life they fought for. I witnessed my mother at the World War II memorial. There's a portion of that memorial with stars that designates the number of lives lost, and when she approached it, she took one look at it and just broke down in tears. We cannot take for granted what that Greatest Generation lost, what they fought for, and what they provided for us as they started their families after. I really appreciate the fact that you took the time to come here and reflect on it, and I will continue to reflect on your words. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilman Pennington?
Yeah, I want to comment also to Mr. Geiger. My—my son is in the Navy, and he serves—my dad was in the Army, and he served in the Korean War, and my son, like I said, he serves—he'll be in the Middle East here shortly on a destroyer, and he served because of gentlemen like you and your brother who—who did give the ultimate sacrifice, and we appreciate, you know, your service.
Any comments? Councilman Gottlieb?
Mr. Geiger, thank you for coming in and sharing with us your thoughts, and thank you for your service.
There are no council referrals this evening, so we will move to council comments. Any—any more council comments this evening? Next are reports. Any comments on any of the reports in the packet this evening from council? There is no closed session this evening, so we are adjourned. Thank you for coming this evening.